This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the April 18, 2022 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, unforget, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have two additions to tonight's agenda, and we're going to put those under new business. And the first addition is a staff report from Ben, each of the council members have. And the next addition is a new appointee for the Public Works Committee. So are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
We're going to cross out the 12B. It's not finalized yet, the MOU with the four entities, so I don't have it for review. We'll bring it back on May 2.
Okay, so with the elimination of the Resolution 2022-06, we will not be doing that MOU tonight. So any other additions or corrections?
That's an application for the Budget Committee, isn't that correct?
Yes.
She's already on the Public Works.
Yeah, so F is Budget Committee.
Budget Committee.
F.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight with those two additions and one elimination?
I'm going to accept the agenda.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Ms. Huber.
Aye.
Ms. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Norman.
Aye.
Are there any presentations tonight? Well, shoot, we have to move right into the Mayor's Report and...
We do topics from the floor first and wait for our guest to walk in.
I think we could.
You might have to get her in the back.
Maybe she's been there all the time.
Well, I can go ahead and start.
Well, wait, I'd wait till the woman of the hour walks in.
Oh, I know, but I'm leading up to that.
See, look at that.
For some of you that have never been to a council meeting before or are not aware of one of the agenda items, we recognize the Citizen of the Month Award, and we started that almost four years ago. And it was my turn this month of April to choose a candidate. And you all know it's Joanne Beemish this year. And it's my honor to recognize you, Joanne. And I got a chance to sit down with you the other day and talk to you about when you came to Brunnhilde. And you and John came to Brunnhilde in 1966 from Arizona, not California, but Arizona. And you started with Kearls Transportation in 1978, and you're still with us. I work, I'm a bus driver also with Kearls. And so you've been driving school buses for 44 years and still at it. And Bob, how many retirement parties have we had for Joanne?
Not that many, no less than that.
I know I signed about three well-wishing cards for retirement, but she's a wonderful asset.
Jack fell down to a park for many years for me.
But 44 years is a long time. And I asked her, what's the one thing that meant the most to you during those 44 years? And she said, I only had to suspend one student in that 44-year time off my bus. So that speaks volumes of the relationship you had with the kids and with the community. So pretty awesome. Let's see. Yeah, I remember, you know, you bussed my kids around 30 years ago, so pretty amazing.
Third generation.
Third generation. So anyway, thanks for all you do, continue to do for us. And I want to present you with a monthly award of...
I'm letting the mayor get out.
I'm going to take a picture.
No, no, I don't want a photo bomb this.
That hasn't been a bad neighbor.
Might have been me, I don't know.
Now you can go have a party. At least take you out to dinner.
Oh, yeah, we're still in the recession at our house, wait two, three hours.
Thanks, Ed.
That was awesome.
Are there any committee reports?
I have one.
Okay.
I made it to the Airport Committee meeting. They finally was able to get enough people and come in here, and we had a nice little meeting on Tuesday. There was five people there so they could have their quorum. They did have a new person come in, and they added him into the mix. Got good. Chris, I believe, was his name. They did discuss about maybe some rock on the airport way, adding some more markers on the runway, and a workshop on June 28, or May 28th and 29th, maybe to fill in some low spots they have. So they're making some progress out there.
How often do they meet, Don?
The next one's going to be this fall. They try twice a year, so.
So thank you, Don, you're welcome. I attended the Library Board meeting last week, and they elected a new chair for their board. Plus, Shannon put together some statistics during her last two years of the COVID, and participation, people that participated and visited the library. And I thought it was, I want to read, the St. Helens Public Library has... Let's see. They have a population of 11,000. I'm sorry. 13,915 people, City of St. Helens. Brunnhilde has 2,110. For the year 2020 and '21, the City of St. Helens had 9,077 visits. Brunnhilde had 7,999. So there's quite a bit of activity in our library for capital of the people that live there. And I just, that stat really struck out at me, and they're doing a good job down at the library with their guest speakers and novel writers and activities they have for the kids. And so they're doing a good job there. So I was pretty impressed with that. That's all I have. Any topics from the floor tonight? Wendy's here.
So I wanted to say, this is probably my last time that I'm going to be at the meeting representing the skate park. As you know, the grand opening is this weekend on Saturday. Super proud about that. Wanted to remind you, none of you were here the first time I came before council, which was five years ago, and asked about what to do and how to get the skate park set up, and was told to go to the Parks Committee and get it started there. It's been a really hard road to get the skate park started because we were poo-pooed at the skate park, or at the Parks Committee, because they had so many other tasks on their list that me coming in there, they felt they were being railroaded. But anyway, so that's when I had to talk to the citizens and pack the house and show the Parks Committee that the citizens of Brunnhilde wanted the skate park to happen. And it all started with a Facebook post. What happened to the skate park? Did anybody, you know, we've tried to get this going. And as I was scrolling through it, I go, I'll do it. I'll take it over. And so Jeremy, right from the get-go, and I have been on this road for the last five years. We did put together in the last five years $136,000 towards the skate park. With the Holtz Family Foundation, they were able to come up with the rest of it so that we could finish that skate park. It would have taken probably another three years. But I just wanted to let them know it's been a long road, and it started off with, we don't have time for you to, it's here, it's happening. The community is super stoked about it. Working with Josette was awesome. She's been there right from the get-go, too, just hammering things home for us. Last thing that I did was talk to West Oregon Lighting. I went in and talked to their whole board and asked them what they could do to help the skate park. And they came up with, we need seven light poles for the skate park. They said they would buy it a cost for us and that they would put them in at no charge, depending on, you know, how we wanted, how they needed to be set up. So I got that, too. So that would have cost thousands more. And then the thing that I'm working on right now with, I just gave it to Josette last Thursday, is a warranty transfer so that it would revert to Evergreen Skate Park's warranty would transfer to the city, other than the boosters hanging on to it for the next year or so. We're also right in the middle of applications for free boards and skateboards for the indigent children. We're in the middle of processing those applications right now, and we hope to get them away at the skate park. So we expect there'll be probably a few trickling in at that time, too. But we have free boards that we've already purchased, ready to go, with helmets and pads. We also, I talked to the police about five years ago when I first started this whole endeavor, about circling around the skate park and then giving out, they came up with the idea of perhaps finding a brat that could give them stickers for safety first. And they would give out stickers to these kids, and it would be on a regular basis. So it would just keep, keep the kids, you know, moving towards safety first. So we have a lot of good stuff planned for the grand opening. Just met with Josette and the boosters at the skate park. And we're going to have a booth with our raffling off t-shirts, sweatshirts, giveaways, the free boards for the kids. Then we're going to have the kids run through the paper. We also have unheard skate park people that are going to come out. They're like professionals, but they're like lifers. And they're going to show the kids, we're going to put on a show and show the kids what we, what they can do on each one of the elements that are in the skate park. This is a one-of-a-kind skate park. There is no others like it. It is going all over Oregon and outside of Oregon. So people that are going to be coming here after our grand opening that are going to be skating on it, every night, to the community. Everybody wants to see the new skate park. So last but not least, I want to say thank you. Thank you to the committee. Thank you to Josette. And thank you to the council for making this happen. We're done.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you for all your effort.
Thank you, Wendy, and thank you for never giving up. I mean, that's how things get done.
That's right.
Look forward to Saturday and, yeah.
Yeah, so we're putting on a show, so.
And that starts at noon?
Starts at noon.
Noon's going to be the ceremony part, and then the kids are going to run through. Boosters is hosting a free lunch for kids down there. And then the show's probably going to be half hour in or so. We're going to blow an air horn, have the kids get off so that the professionals can show them how each element works. And then they can get back on and spend the whole day there.
Somebody going to videotape this open, or ceremony?
I don't know. I'm hoping to get good pictures.
Nice to get a video of the...
Yeah, I might, yeah, I might see if I can get the drone owners to fly a drone above it. Good for, good for advertising and promoting Evergreen and their cool design. And I got with Tony Hawk, and he said, please send us photos. They aren't able to make the grand opening, but he wants photos and stuff. So we could send them a video. That'd be awesome.
I kind of, I have to admit, you know, five or even 10 years ago, I was kind of against it. I was probably one of those people against it. But as, and I'll admit that, I mean, I thought it was a lot of money for something that a limited amount of people will use. But the more I saw your group fundraise, and I got involved in with my horse and carriage five, four, five years ago, and the more I saw what they were doing, and they never gave up, and pretty soon they had $60,000 raised for it, and you changed my mind. And I got behind it 100%. And I think a lot of people, and then watching it be built and looking at it now, we're really proud of it.
Isn't that beautiful? Seriously. You know, the hardest thing about it was the stigma that's attached to skate parks, too. Even though skate parks have been around for 20-plus years, there's still some really super negative stigma that's attached to it. And I'm hoping that, you know, with the free stickers and the regular, you know, visits that, you know, that's going to go away, too. So, yeah, thank you.
Well.
Thank you, Wendy. It's a monumental task to stick with something for that many years, when, especially dealing with government, that makes it even that much harder, I know. You're not going to get the recognition you probably deserve, or Jeremy, but you guys should take pride in every time you drive by and see some people up there. So well done.
We do. The only real difference is our names on the plaque.
I hope you get...
It'll probably happen someday. Oh, yeah.
Josette knows what we want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Consent agenda for acceptance, Library Board Meeting minutes for March 2022. Any discussion or questions? I'd like to make a motion to accept those meeting minutes.
Make that motion that we accept the Library meeting minutes for March 2022.
So moved, Counselor Allen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Ms. Norman.
Aye.
Ms. Webb. Ms. Huber.
Aye.
Ms. Ash.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Consent agenda for approval, City Council Meeting minutes for April 4, 2022.
No issues. Yeah, I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'll move to accept the consent agenda for approval.
So moved, is there a second? Thank you, Counselor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Ms. Huber.
Aye.
Ms. Allen.
Aye.
Ms. Ash.
Aye.
Ms. Webb.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's serious.
Okay, moving right into unfinished business. Staff report, Millstein project timeline can be found on page eight through 10.
What we see before you is a staff report internally from me. I will go through all of it as a sample tent to review it. But I'm here to field any questions if you feel like they're necessary.
Do the Millsteins know we were going to talk about this tonight?
The agenda's published.
Got it. I did read, I have read through this. A little bit was, some of it was a little confusing to me or contradictory a little bit to what I remembered. So I was hoping we could go through this in a work session on Wednesday, the 20th.
The only fear of doing a session is into a he-said-she-said, and it will be a very sticky situation if it gets quiet with an applicant in a public forum.
All of our meetings are in public forum.
But interactions with them about this project have not been...
I wasn't saying that we necessarily had to go whatever way to invite them in. I was talking about for myself personally as a counselor, I'd like a little more time to go over this, but...
Are you wanting it to be a...
We set up...
...session to, so you guys can be up to date on what are the requirements? Or are you wanting this?
Yeah, there's some of that. There's some of the language in here. I just had a few. It was like, hmm, want to get a little bit. We talked about a work session, and we scheduled it tentatively on the 20th. So I didn't know. I was willing to do it if you guys are, but...
I read through all this timeline, and it's pretty clear to me where we're at and what we've been doing the last two years.
Yeah.
And so I, I personally don't feel that we need a work session on this. I pretty well have decided what I want to do with this.
I'm in that boat as well. I'd attend, obviously, but I don't have a need.
Yeah, I don't see where we would make a change. I mean, even, even process-wise, to come to us for a road on a platted street is, we definitely, I mean, that's circumventing our processes that we have. I mean, you'd have to basically have a... I don't know what you call it, vacate. I mean, I don't know how we do that. And frankly, I don't think it's appropriate. It's, these, this here is exactly what we kicked around for two years of the what ifs, is what's going to happen when we rip the Band-Aid off. And I thought we were very clear that this is painful for us, to see this happen to somebody. And but everybody wanted to change what's going on, change our path forward. So this is the cost. And it's not comfortable, but I think it's the right thing. I don't know what we would do in workshops that would change my outlook on it right now. I don't either.
Can we clarify for stuff for you tonight?
Yeah, I guess my main thing is I want to make sure they didn't get caught in government change of personnel. I mean, I see this clear back starting basically 3/13/2019. That's before we, I think we even really started talking about making sidewalk changes.
Right, and that's when he got the letter from me, right?
And then it moves on to Matt Straight, and it seems like when they were in here testifying the other night that they had some letter to go ahead. Then it says in here, we made a mistake and sent something to them. And I just want to make sure that they didn't get the short...
Show me where the, it says that.
That was, they got their approval from engineering. People got that until their permit was issued. That was in the middle of everything. And they were immediately told that that happened. That was not a valid approval.
The permit is the valid, right.
So could you elaborate on that a little bit more? I'm still a little bit lost on that paragraph.
Okay, so the Millsteins came in in 2019 to talk about a potential project. And in 2021, they went ahead and sold their house. And then they came in and made an application to build a new house instead of the 21. So in this entire time, things are changing, as they always do. I mean, the approval process significantly changed since 2019. It's been reviewed by many more reviewers to make sure that it meets code, the timeline and the public record standards. So they applied for their new home, I think it was October, let me see, yes, October 6, 2021. Then it started going through the review process. In November, I had discussions with the owner and let him know, because at that time they were working on a fee and what that would look like. Because in October, we weren't moving forward any applications because we were in the middle of the discussions for the fee and lieu, and they would have to meet the code. To further complicate this, this is a property that's on an area of town that does not have a built road. So not only are they subject to the fee and lieu, but they also have to build their access.
You can't pay a fee and lieu and not have a road.
Correct, correct. There are two separate requirements, which have been explained over and over again in meetings and in personnel meetings with that. Then, where was it that that was sent?
The ninth.
The state was 11/15/21.
Okay, yeah, 11/15. There were multiple applications that were happening in this time. So they had a right-of-way permit application for first avenue, and then a right-of-way permit application for the house, because you are required to have one for both. Both are going through simultaneous permitting process. And all the time, also, we're having the discussions here, which they were also in those meetings, or he was.
Yeah.
She wasn't until the other day. So there's been a lot of different discussions at the staff level, council level, and with the applicant. This isn't, this isn't all of them. But I didn't want it to turn into a he-said-she-said, I-said-you-said timeline. It was just the meat of it.
The right-of-way, it says build out 24 feet. Is that the whole street they have to build, not just half?
No, that's half.
That's the half.
Yes.
They can do a half-street, and it has to be paved, I read in there?
Correct. That is what our code requires. And they're connecting it to a paved road.
Yeah.
And how far is it to their house? That they have to go on through to the next street to be able to acquire access?
The farthest side of their property line.
They could build a big turnaround, I think.
Correct.
Which would probably...
That's up...
...be able to encompass the other half of the street? Would have to be all be on their property?
No, it can be in the right-of-way.
Anyway.
It could be part of it. In order to do a hammerhead, they will have to have part of it on their property. Or they can go all the way through. But that's up to them to design with their engineer, not us.
Sure. And the waivers are remonstrous before. It was basically just for sidewalk, curb, and asphalt, because we were given a Louisiana... Because we were given Louisiana, they have no asphalt up.
So the waiver of remonstrance was for the frontage requirements when you're building a single family house. They still had to build access.
Wasn't Title IX, Title IX didn't call for asphalt?
Title IX and the public work standards.
We weren't holding them up there for asphalt.
We were building them to the gravel standard. They were connecting to gravel.
We have a gravel standard also?
Yes.
It's, it's supposed to be asphalt ready.
But we have a gravel standard in the TSP.
But they can't do the standard over here.
They're connecting to an asphalt road.
I see.
He did bring up the question about connecting.
Which we cannot.
It depends on what you're connecting. It says that specifically. So if you're connecting to a gravel road, you can use the gravel standard.
Okay.
It, but it's a fully engineered road just without an asphalt cap on it.
Yeah.
It states that it must be asphalt, sidewalk, curb and gutter. And we agreed that they would not have to put in the sidewalk all the way to Cougar if they're participating in the sidewalk curb and gutter fee and lieu in front of their house as a courtesy. The code says they have to do that. But if they're going to be doing the fee and lieu in front of their house for the sidewalk curb and gutter, then like.
Okay, I'm just clarifying. I'm not making accusations. I just want to know my mind. Come up to me later and ask questions, I can explain to them.
Well, that's the hard thing is this, this has been over years. And there's a lot of passion involved. And we, we can't possibly understand where they're coming from fully. They can't fully, they can't possibly understand where we're coming from fully. There's been uncomfortable situations between staff and applicants. Not just these ones, but other ones as well. We are just implementing the code. That is the standard that we have before us. There is a desire to make town better and not have all these issues come up. That includes storm, that includes asphalt. We have people engineering their asphalt roads right now that are going to be paved.
And they're not the only applicant that's called and yelled at staff that this is the new code. They're not the only unhappy customer. There are, there's probably going to be three before.
But then we have other ones like, okay, well, this is the cost to build. And it was on this timeline. They paid their fee and they're moving forward.
Right.
All right, let's go.
Yeah.
So real estate people have any kind of obligation to let them know?
Real estate.
Change this?
Most of the time they say buyer to do due diligence and that's it.
Well, we get that. We have a couple of tricky lots in town that have some environmental issues that have to be dealt with. They're not unsurmountable, but somebody's going to have to legally jump through some hoops. And that's nothing to do with us. This is state of Oregon level stuff. And honestly, the realtors could be honest upfront and say, this is what it is. I, I've literally had probably 600 calls on the single piece of property over the last 15 years because the realtor just won't tell the truth. And they, people are ready to buy it and build a house. What do I got to do? And I'm, and then the first thing out of my mouth is, well, I've got bad news for you.
You have to do wetland delineation?
You have, yeah, you have to do a wetland delineation. And, and that's nothing to do with the city knowing you. So that's kind of, we run into that a lot with these properties. And listening to Stephanie speak about implementing these changes, they've always been the rule.
Right.
This has always been, this is nothing new. And we're pulling off the Band-Aid. When this administration came into City Hall 10 years ago, the city of Renonia was a mess. We were all, we were only collecting 70% of our billing. We weren't double checking house plans the way we should have. We have corrected so many little things over time. And one of the things with these utilities and these unplatted right of ways is it's big and expensive and hard. Just like Dale was saying. This is kind of the last step. This is one of the last big Band-Aids that we just have to pull off. Say, this has been the rule. It's still the rule. And we just have to move forward and enforce it. We never had professional planning. We never had a professional engineer. We didn't have staff who looked at the details protecting the public. And we have that now. And making these transitions is hard. And that's, that's kind of what it boils down to.
And it's nothing personal.
No.
Unfortunately, had they built their house in 2019, this would be a mute point, but they didn't. And then the, everything started getting more dialed in, more dialed in.
Literally been a mute point. You still have to build a road to your house.
Right. In 2019, he was allowed to, because at that stage, we didn't have all of these professionals in the scheme of it looking over everything. He was given the opportunity, like we had done that same year with a couple of other ones that were the last house on a single line. They had to bring, bring in the gravel road standard for their road.
As a private road where they actually, the city didn't take ownership of it.
Right.
So when he got that letter, if he would have just built his private road to his house.
Built his house.
And built his house, he would have had a private driveway in a public right of way.
But he waited too long.
Never did.
He didn't do it. And that, that expired. And unfortunately, it had nothing to do with that. It just coincided with us saying, okay, we're taking this next step with following the rules. Council started asking questions about, hey, especially with what's going on in North Louisiana. And so he, it was just unfortunate timing.
Yeah.
I mean, he could have built a roadway in the house in 2019 and it would have been done. But he didn't and he got caught up in this bigger citywide discussion of, okay, we got to start requiring our public infrastructure for, for new houses.
Yeah.
So is it?
Not just that. We have, I mean, today I talked to somebody who talked to staff in 2016 about what the requirements would be. And now they're ready to move forward with their project. Well, that was a long time ago. Our law has changed.
Right.
So has anybody elected to do the site work, which was my intent of having sidewalks in this town? Or is the engineering going to be a situation where it costs so much? They just pay the fee, the lesser of two evils. That's what I'm worried about.
So the, so the engineering, he can pay the fee on his home, but the engineering for the road is a requirement. And we've, we've told him the easiest way to not be the only person paying that bill is to come to council and request a reimbursement district. So if any other developer, which there's that huge property where the old cedar mill was, if anyone develops that, he gets paid back for the engineering work he's required to do. So it's not like he's left out. You know, it's not like do it yourself and too bad for you. And then your neighbor piggybacks on it. Put in a reimbursement district and then we can split it apart among those parcels. And every time someone decides to develop across the street, they pay back Mr. Millstein first for the engineering. Right? Before we approve any permits. So there, that's happened on water line extensions, all kinds of things.
You looking at stormwater and fire hydrant and all that too?
Yeah, it all has to be engineered. Yeah.
He doesn't have to put in any water main though. We are actually going to be doing some upgrades in the area. But all he has to do is the road.
I think everybody here can understand the frustration when you're told something and maybe you don't know all the rules or the timelines and then you sell your house and then, oh, we've changed our mind.
I mean, I looked at a car five years ago. I wouldn't expect them to give me the same price that it was listed then. Things have changed. Upgrades, design changes have happened. The cost of doing business has changed.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I don't think personally that you can wait three years and expect that it would have to be honored. He hadn't finished the process. And to your point of it's not personal, I think the only way to make it not personal is to uphold the code. Because if you make an exception here, then every time we up in the future, that is personal, like.
Right.
I know you mentioned that we had a change in staff. I just want to make sure that that change in staff didn't have a significant impact on what happened here.
No, that was 10 years ago.
You, you mean the change in staff and planning?
Yeah, our engineer.
No, because we, it, like Ben was saying, it was kind of a storm. So Public Works had asked staff and council for three years ahead of the 2019. We need an engineer that engineers reviews everything that's going on when these homes are built. Because people were doing weird dry wells with their stormwater. They were doing weird things. And we're not engineers. So we're not going out there and looking at it saying, oh, that's not okay. So it was kind of a perfect storm, right? So we got an engineer on record. The planning changed. The one planner was way more stringent in the code and wanted to hold, was more of an actual strict code reader and wanted to hold the rule that's been in there all along. Where before, the planner before was going off the planner before and eh, right? I mean, there, it's just, it's always been a rule. It was just never interpreted the same way. So that changed with the public works, with getting an engineer that reviews plans and reviews site development and all that. All those things compounded to the, and then council doing the fee and lieu. That's another part of the perfect storm. So all those things were happening simultaneously. It isn't just because we got a different planner and they read the code different. You guys did the fee and lieu. We quit doing waivers. There's all these things happening. So it's not just one line that was a problem for the Millsteins. It's multiple veins of all this work and trying to get on the up and up so that code, so that staff can implement the policies and code just how they are and not be picking and choosing. When I was mayor, there was picking and choosing all the time from staff, right? It'd be like, hmm, I mean, I remember one time I drove up on River Street and there was a guy constructing a fence on the outside of the sidewalk. And I came into staff and I said, what is going on? Well, we're not using that property anyway. And I said, oh no, you need to tell him he can't, that's the right of way. We can't let. But I think we were a small town where that kind of worked for a number of years. And it just isn't how we do business anymore. We're just right on the code, right on the policy. If someone has a water leak, we have a policy. If someone has this, we have a policy. It's just, it safeguards council from not playing favorites. It safeguards staff from not playing favorites of someone they know or their brother-in-law or whoever. It's just the way we should have been doing business this whole time. Now we're doing it.
And they're, they're big expensive things too. It's just like, you guys are going to be looking at SDCs in the next couple of years. And that's going to be, that's going to be pain, that's going to be another painful thing for council and staff to deal with.
The people that should build this year, but if they wait until after you raise the SDCs and then they're mad that they're more money, well, you should have built this year when they were cheaper.
They're probably just, yeah, based on system development charges than any other city. You're going to get a report back from a consultant that's going to tell you they go from 8,500 to $17,000 per house. So there's going to be, that's going to be another tough decision, but it's just what it is. And there's going to be people that are going to be caught in that transition. And it's, these are, these are the tough things. We, you know, making sure everybody pays their, their water bill and not accruing debt or letting people slide on their parks fee because they come in and cry at the counter. Those are easy fixes to policy.
Yeah.
Holding people accountable on building streets or paying legitimate SDCs. Those are, those are the tough things. And I guess that we've, all the low hanging fruit has been picked. The, the decisions now that council has to make and that staff have, have to enforce are tough, are the tough ones. They're the expensive ones. They're the ones that affect people the most. And it's just, that's just how it is.
Yeah.
So you okay with that?
Yeah, that's all I wanted to make sure is that you weren't slowing down the COVID.
No.
No.
He could have built it.
He's working from home or switching planners and the information didn't flow and a year went by and then, you know, so.
Now, we were in contact with them a lot.
Well, we're ready to, if there's no other discussion or questions or is the council ready to make a recommendation to the staff? Want to do?
I don't think there was a last waiver of remonstrance given out.
Well, the most recent one was an approved one that was approved for the last house on G.
I think it was July.
Yeah.
Maybe August that you guys.
Second Avenue.
No.
No.
I want to say it's OK.
It was the ones up top.
Yeah.
The second might have been right at the same time.
Yeah, Second Avenue was one of the last ones too.
Yeah.
I think it was July or August.
When they get those, how long do they have to use it?
It's recorded against the title. So you guys have, you could, 20 years from now, the council sitting up there could say, you're putting in the sidewalk.
But the
I mean.
It's issued simultaneously.
Build the house.
It gets issued simultaneously.
Oh, so the Millsteins never had that option because they never got a permit?
They never applied.
Okay.
Yeah. And we are trying to help them like, please don't engineer it without going for reimbursement district. Like do these things that don't feel good right in the moment, but will help them later on when they can get reimbursed for the expenses they outlaid to actually design the road.
And would that reimbursement be tied into those future lots to get?
Yeah, they wouldn't get a permit without paying it.
That would be attached.
So when, when you grant somebody a reimbursement district.
Prove that they paid the money.
We, we, the city becomes the intermediary.
Yeah.
So if you, if you look at any of the regular 12 lot blocks, you have six homes on each side. If you build six homes and build that road, if somebody starts building on the other side, they owe 50% back and the city becomes the intermediary.
If it's recorded.
If it's recorded and they go through the process, what you're, then we, that basically the city says, okay, as part of your permit process for that one lot, you owe, owe 1/12 of the cost of that street. You must pay it to the city and we must reimburse the person before you can get your permit.
Yeah.
Is there a fee for them to set up that district?
No, they just come and petition council and then.
And I believe in, yeah, I believe in you guys. Is it an ordinance or do they?
None have been formed since I've been here.
Yeah, you'd have to look. I think it's an ordinance because the MAC water line that goes out to Biggs Corner is, was a reimbursement. It still is a reimbursement district, but to connect to City Water out there off of that reimbursement district, it's $11,000. That if someone wants to connect to City Water and they're in that span, they would, before we would let them, they would have to pay $11,000 that then we would send on to the.
I just talked to someone that if they tapped into in South Dakota on a water line, it's $85,000.
Yeah.
Hot tap.
Yeah. So there's, there's those kinds of, where someone put in the infrastructure and they are due reimbursement if they go the process, so.
And I'm actually surprised that you haven't seen some up on North Louisiana because there's been construction on one side of the street.
Yeah.
Or on a street with perfectly fine buildable lots on the other side of the street. And the developer is not getting a
Yeah.
Is not getting.
And we've told that developer also, we're like, you should, you should come to the petition for reimbursement.
So when the, when somebody builds a house across the street, you get some percentage back, but.
Well, that brings up a question. If you start building gravel like that, how do you ever end up with asphalt if you're connecting to gravel and connecting to gravel? Pretty soon we'd be cleared to school all gravel.
Those are all going to be asphalt up there.
Yeah.
So right now it's gravel.
Asphalt.
Yeah.
But also to further complicate it, they're doubling the traffic on those roads, which triggers requirement for asphalt.
Yeah.
Traffic study.
And well, so where he's built and has waivers on one end and he's doing the north side, he has to asphalt it because he's doubling the capacity of the road. All the other ones, once we pave Louisiana, council, if it's got the stomach for it, could call in for those to get paved and do the improvements.
And it's not on the contractor at that point. It's on the citizen. So
Right.
That's where it gets tough.
Well, that's where you, you end up with issues. You're really just kicking the can down the road because there's going to come a day when there's going to be a council sitting up there who's ready to call in the sidewalks. And then all of a sudden, 30 homeowners get a letter from the city saying, hey, you've got whatever, 90 days to get plans in and approved and build the sidewalk in front of your, in front of your property. And one of the other, this is just kind of. And one of the other, this is just kind of a, a side note. There's people who, some, when, when the first homes started getting built up there, some, I had, a couple of people had called in and talked to me and they had problems with bank loans. Because some banks don't, they would rather loan you more money upfront for those improvements instead of having.
A lien.
Uh, having that against your property, not knowing if, if the homeowner is going to have to come back to you and say, or not be able to pay because all of a sudden they have to do a 25, $50,000 improvement.
Right.
And so there were people who could, were having issues getting mortgages.
Yeah.
Because the, it's a bunch of brand new homes with, without the infrastructure there. And then there's a requirement, uh, recorded against their, that the city could call in for, you know, u- utilities at any time with that or infrastructure with that waiver.
That answer your question, Don?
A little bit, but I've got another one. So is that Maple, that's the gravel one past where they have the coffee shop now?
Yeah.
If that person with extra property come in that street and made a cul-de-sac and now the houses had a first avenue address, would they still have to pay for part of that street?
Yeah, so his access isn't actually on Maple. He would have to go on to First because of the culvert there and Bear Creek running right there. His access can't be Maple.
So.
It's going to have to be off of First somewhere where he'll have enough width for a subdivision because he'd have to have 50-foot apron if he's going into multiple homes up there.
Yeah, but if he made one single in and made like a cul-de-sac or something.
He can't because the right-of-way cuts there. So Maple sucks and right there is the culvert to Bear Creek.
Even if he come in Cougar, had one main entrance to a cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Had address.
Any parcel that touches it, you would be in the reimbursement.
Okay.
So if the corner lot, if First is down here, he's touching First. He doesn't get a bankroll on Cougar and not pay into the street that he abuts.
It would be anybody who actually accessed that street.
Yeah.
And that was their frontage.
Yeah, which if you're a corner lot, it is considered your frontage.
Yeah.
And it'd be a subdivision.
Yeah. The plans we've gotten, preliminary plans over the years have been for a subdivision in there. So it's going to be multiple homes off one big entrance off of First probably.
I'm just making sure there's no catch that they can get in there and not have paid for each lot that's connected to the street.
Thing would be Donald, is if, say they go in with, for most of the houses, then that one house that's on First is paying 50% of the cost. They're paying all the reimbursement back if they want to shortchange it like that and sneak in Cougar. Whatever parcel sits on First, that's paying his other half.
Right.
Yeah, it's just better if they come in off First and then break it up over the multiple homes. But they could make one kind of screwy lot and then that one person's got the.
What I'm afraid of, you know, I don't see it being a problem there and nobody's going to do if he had to put the street in and get reimbursed.
Yeah.
But that, we can't guarantee him that somebody later doesn't come in and sneak in another way and don't have to reimburse him for the other side of the street.
Well, that's what I'm saying. They could come off of, let me just explain myself a little better. So if, if, say they came off right here.
Right.
Whoever builds a house right here will pay the other 50%.
They'd have to pay the rest of the whole block.
They, even if, if the developer tries to be sneaky, that one home site would pay the other half of the cost to Aaron.
Okay.
They couldn't get around that.
And that's just the cost of doing business. Even if they didn't have a, even if they had backs of lots that faced there with some street configuration in that parcel itself, the developers, he's just going to reimburse him the whatever he owes. That's just the cost of doing business with a subdivision.
Yeah.
There's always those little, whenever you do any kind of larger development like that, those are just, that's just the cost to doing business. You're going to run into reimbursement districts or upgrading other streets, et cetera, off, off your property.
Yeah.
But yes, you're right, they cannot, they would not get away with it. If somebody develops that, if Aaron has got his reimbursement district, he's getting his half money back when that subdivision, that's just going to be part of the subdivision process, okay?
Because most likely a subdivision is going to have to have two exits anyway. So even if they came in Cougar, they're going to have to come out somewhere else and it's going to be First, right? They're not going to go up the hill to bridge or something because that'd be too steep.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Do you want a direction from council?
Yes.
In the form of a motion.
Yeah, there's two, two options there, whatever you were going for.
Oh, I'll move the, to staff to continue working on the prevention, permission schemes bill and to, and to process them utilizing the city adopted code.
So move, thank you, Councilor Webb, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Councilor Ash.
Hi.
Uh, Councilor Allen.
Aye.
Councilor Norman.
Aye.
Stephanie, Staff Report B, Spencer Park Camera Proposal.
So this one's from me via chief. Um, so this is the breakdown of what the 60-term lease version would be if we did a lease version. Park cameras. I do have an email here though, that I want to read to you from our attorney. Because I, so this was just the one pager. I asked them to send me the actual agreement and I sent that to our attorney. And our attorney said, um, I would, I would direct council to either buy the cameras at full cost or say no to the cameras. There are concerns in their agreement that releasing it as is, we have to give, there's all these markers you have to hit to exit the agreement. And if you don't do it just right, he's concerned, it's huge red flags for him. Um, he said, there is another suggestion that they could find a different company to do the lease option because there's companies out, this Tamco is one company. They're really just the middleman between the camera purchaser who's Haysen Camp, Hassan Camp, I don't know.
Yeah.
Haysen Camp. And then Tamco would be the middleman between Hassan Camp and the city, Haysen Camp and the city. Um, Ruben says it's not an agreement. So we should not, uh, step into the lease option. We should either bring back for you guys to fund them in full or bring back a different company that does not have the issues in their agreement that he was concerned about.
I also figured, since it's more of a rental, like a lease, you know, not, we wouldn't own anything at the end of it. I expected it to be a cost savings and it's quite a bit more expensive.
Right. So if you guys are still interested in the Spencer cameras, then we could either bring you back an ARPA request for the full amount. He could investigate another company to do the lease option.
What's the wishes of the council?
Oh, I agree with Councilor Ash. So, I mean, just pencil it out. This company, of course, makes some money to do this, so it's like 40 grand, over 40 grand in a five-year period, so. Also, I mean, that's a big reoccurring cost every year, over $6,000 versus, I think it was around 1,100.
Yeah.
For licensing, I think. You know, this ARPA money, the one-time deal, um, putting a yearly reoccurring costs that huge on, into one of our budgets is going to have to be, if we owned outright. I think, I think it's probably better, I think there was warnings on the cameras, so.
Yeah.
Failures, there's some coverage there, so this doesn't buy us a whole lot doing this.
Costs a little more.
Yeah. What section of ARPA were we put, did this qualify under?
Well, so they did the one that was like protection, organizing people, keeping people out of areas when they're closed.
Able to get number counts on people, um, censors for restrooms, stuff like that. And that was the first proposal that we can, for council with. But that's how they were doing that is, is managing people.
Yeah, for your public area. So if it's a closed thing or if you're only allowing so many people, you could use camera systems to deal with that.
Oh, that was in our ARPA guide or whatever?
Yeah, that's the first thing to you, did more of their presentation directly connected to the criteria of ARPA. Remember they, when they came?
Well, they were on.
Oh, they were on video, yeah. Sorry, we were all on video at that point.
I mean, it does feel like a very correlated relationship that the vandalism up to during COVID. So it kind of specifically tackles.
Knows a lot of it too.
A result of COVID.
Yeah.
So do you need a motion tonight or can you just?
Or just.
On an action item, so.
Direction, if you guys would like us to come back with Haysen Camp's proposal related to your ARPA funds and what's remaining in there for you guys to discuss it and look at it again, then we could bring it back on May 2nd.
It's going to tighten up something for us.
And we had some savings, we were going to use our boom truck and stuff, okay. So we'll bring it back May 2nd with.
Yeah. Would you like Haysen Camp to?
I think so. I wouldn't expect another lease company.
I think so. That way they can ask him all the questions and what it would be.
So everyone in agreement?
Yeah.
Bring it back to us. Okay. Moving on to new business, library board recommendation. Jim Bryson.
I, not to look at the, uh, application at the board meeting last week, so. Rest of the council reviewed his application. One of the council's unanimous consent, I, it's my pleasure, if, if the council agrees, I'll appoint Mr. Bryson or Brunson.
Bryson.
Brunson?
Bryson.
Bryson. Jim. To the library board. Total consent, council?
Yes.
Good. I appoint, uh, James Bryson to the library board. Welcome, James, and, and I know they could use you there. Open air market request.
This one I have a little bit of heartburn.
I think that was coming.
It's been three years now and they promised to put the safety stuff on there and it's either complete failure or disregard for council or the city never gave them the paint. I don't, I wonder.
Well, we have, we don't have the paint right now, but we had the paint at all the moments in there. We don't have our new paint, traffic paint order yet, but.
Did they ever get the message?
Yeah.
Oh.
I gave them the message.
Well, then I would.
And they cleaned, I mean, they cleaned it, part of their thing is, is they're, they're not, um.
They're all sticking up too?
I don't think there's, there's just a differential in the, where the concrete juts down. The, I think why they don't see it, or maybe, I'm just guessing, why they don't see it as a huge issue is they put their backs to that edge so that people are walking in the middle on the flat and their back is to the, if that makes sense?
About them.
Yeah.
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 My, my other question was, do they have to have a liability insurance like everybody else to do anything on the city? Couple million?
No, they don't. Um, they're just seen as like temporary vendors, so they're not like a, it's not a lease or something. So they're kind of taking their risk to sell their crafts in their, in their own hands.
Do we have an agreement with them that says we're not held responsible for anything?
They're covered under the, I don't know, who's the one Erica Palfe used to be with the?
Are they under hands on our?
They're, they're under that umbrella, I believe.
Oh, see, I don't know that. We could check on that for you.
I'm just asking the question.
Typically, when they're using that kind of what we used to call the food court, food cart court or whatever, the individuals, they have their own rules with public health for if they're serving food. They have their own rules for, but we haven't had them prove insurance coverage to us to sell their wares there. They're like a transient vendor more than a brick and mortar or a lease person. But we can check on that, the insurance. Guys are concerned about it.
I just figured you knew about it or something.
Well, no, I, what Stephanie is saying sounds right, but I can't be assured of that. I'd have to double check with them that that is still the case, that they're covered under there. That's interesting.
I realize it's a cool thing and I want to.
Yeah.
Promote it and help them, but it seemed like nobody mows or weeds or does much.
Well, they're really like five or six people, JR. They're not, and they're individuals like that have full-time jobs. It's like their little side deal, like they grow extra vegetables or they make crochet doilies. I don't know what they sold down there. Haven't been, I didn't go last year because of just busyness, but.
Oh, so it's different people.
It's different kind of craft artisans that do little, like someone might grow, you know, tons of rhubarb and sell rhubarb one weekend or something.
And sign up for a single week, so it's not necessarily a group or.
You don't have to be there the whole season.
I think they, a couple get like actual traveling vendors, like people that go to different farmers markets around this part of the state and they'll stop one Saturday, they'll be in Vernonia selling necklaces or whatever.
I think it's something we should do, even if the city has to do it, because we let people use it at Jamboree also. You know, a lot of people are in there too.
Yeah. The steam engine group has been in there the last couple of Jamborees and they're just kind of more visual and they're cordoned off, so no one sticks their hand in.
Who brought it up? Somebody brought up the tripping hazard. I remember it's like three, four years ago, three years ago.
Yeah, it's definitely not a smooth slab the whole way. But I think how they configure themselves, they avoid that. The way they're putting their backs to the edge where it kind of drops off so that the people kind of walk in the U shape, which is the flat, flattest area.
As long as a vendor doesn't trip and try to.
Yeah.
Take action.
Well, and we could have them, you know, we could make some sort of waiver they have to sign. If they're going to be a vendor, Brett could have someone sign a waiver. Setting up shop as is and you know it. I mean, I don't want, I, yeah.
I could see that, but then I also see like people park there all the time for mini-marts. So then if it, if we're concerned about safety during the market, are we concerned that someone's going to park to go to mini-marts and do this, like?
Yeah.
Maybe something actually just needs to be tackled if it's that.
Yeah, I don't know about bolts. I know there's an unlevel spot in the slab.
Thought there was part of a stem wall, no, am I wrong?
Yeah, it is because it's, it's flush up here and then there's a stem wall that keeps it level back towards the river.
We talked about a tripping hazard, we wanted to paint it.
Yeah, we wanted them to paint the edge yellow for sure because so people didn't just like walk off the difference in the ground level there, but. And I mean, we could do it, but you guys had asked them to do it. I mean, I could have, when we get traffic paint, I could have the guys do it.
So, yeah.
It's concern.
Yeah, and come back after they do it and then ask us again. That'd be my, that'd be my, uh, recommendation. Every time we keep approving it, it doesn't get done. Then the next year it doesn't get done, the next year, pretty soon I won't be sitting here. We don't charge them anything, right?
No, they charge their vendors $5 a weekend, like $5 a Saturday. Because it is, it, the goal is to kind of get artisans selling, yeah. Doesn't really make them money.
I just thought that was a little bit of skin in the game on their part, painting that.
Yeah.
Here when that came up. Oh, yeah, that's why we, Rick and I both said, oh, we knew this would come. Popped right in my head too.
So the only tricky part is, is we currently don't have the traffic paint because we're waiting for our order, like all the supply line things, we don't even, we're, we're, we're crossing our fingers it gets here for, before Jamboree. Like that's how backed up the traffic supply.
Is it the yellow curb paint?
Yellow or white?
I think we have a gallon of yellow in the traffic room.
But will a gallon go the whole way? I don't know. I mean.
Might be close.
A little bit.
Okay, well, I can get them the paint then, if we, if she thinks there's one in the archive room.
There is less, this little bear garden.
You know what I'd like to see fixed is that fence.
I know.
That, that's been an eyesore for me for three years now.
Yeah, we could get it.
That gal ran into it.
Yeah.
That would be nice to get fixed.
Well, that can be a staff thing.
Yeah.
But, so what do you guys want to do? But, so what do you guys want to do?
We approve it conditionally.
If it gets painted, they can be there on May 14th if it's painted.
We did that two years ago.
Let's do that.
Let's try it again.
It's up to you guys, whatever you want.
I can send him a firmly worded email.
Show up on May 14th and it's not there, we bring the bucket and the paintbrush.
Well, no, I mean, I'll just take the bucket and the paintbrush or the gallon and the paintbrush to his house and say, there you go. Otherwise councils, the police are going to come, shut this cart down. But I can do that if that's what you guys want.
I'm going to revisit it. I think it's a very fair ask if it's somebody who's asked of them before for such a small thing and benefits them. It seems odd that it would be. It would be accomplished.
We don't want someone to get hurt, too.
Right.
And I think it really, I mean, the person we're asking, it's not all of them. It's going to be Brett.
Yeah.
And that's the pro, that's kind of the other issue is it is just one man that's going to have to do this, so they all can come.
Okay, that's what happens when you organize some.
That's right.
We need to put a gate across there and hand him a paintbrush.
First week, $7 and he can buy himself a.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Someone want to make a motion, accept the application with the one stipulation that you paint the safe, yellow safety lines around the border.
I'll make that motion that we approve it with the condition that it's painted by the first.
Okay. Sure, second. Second.
There is one other item on the dates. We got to carve out Jamboree weekend.
Oh. Yeah, they typically know that though, because I think.
I know they do.
I think Rod, I think Roger was like, they went in with the other vendors at that point, because steam engines have always been there.
Move across to Spencer, to the park or everything else.
Yeah, because steam engines have been at.
We do every year, but I think every year we've been carving out dates.
Okay, so let's see, what is, what is?
It's the fifth through the seventh of August.
It's really just that Saturday, so it would be August 6.
And it includes the salmon festival, correct?
Yeah, they usually come to salmon festival. All, all artisans that have participated in the season can get into salmon festival at a local rate, because I want all those people that participate all year long to get into our festival, so.
Okay.
So we did the black powder shoot on a Sunday there one year. You said only Saturday, but we have.
They are on Saturdays.
Open air markets only on Saturday.
Only on Saturdays. That's why I'm saying, so you just have to carve out the August 6th Saturday.
I get what you're saying, okay.
Sound the permit.
Okay, so I will update my motion to include the change to exclude Saturday, August 6th. Yeah.
And it's, it's been seconded. Okay, would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Norman.
Hi.
Councilor what?
Hi.
Councilor Ash.
Hi.
Councilor Alan.
Hey.
Mayor Palmer.
Bye. Okay, Jamboree request. Seventeen through twenty.
Oh, that's that guy right there, isn't it?
Oh, man.
Jamboree friendly, don't worry. You haven't ignored us for three years, Rick.
You're correct. President's not here tonight.
No, he got called in work.
Pretty much the same run of the mill activities going on?
Yes, however, I will say there has been an enormous increase in interest. There's going to be more food vendors, more other vendors.
Yeah.
There are going to be, we're getting a lot more applications away from, whoa, you got. Six new people in the area.
Oh, good.
I want to do this year, the kids fair will be there, so I'll give that, dump the house, whatever the blow up noise you're calling.
Dump the mayor?
Yeah, I think we don't take there. There, at this point in time, the car show is, the person who was going to run it and have it back up for personal reasons, but there are a couple of people who want to try to take it on, so we should have the car show, which will also include a motorcycle show. As far as anything else, a lot of the five percent for the Thursday through Monday.
For, for softball?
No, no, we don't need it. He needs it Thursday for setup for Friday and cleanup ramp along and you remember. They didn't get everything cleaned up until Monday afternoon.
Okay.
That was his issue.
I think he put that on his app.
On Adams, you mean, or, or Incretor?
Thing, the whole, the whole thing.
We couldn't get barricades picked up, we couldn't, the porta potty guy didn't show up until three o'clock, so.
Yeah.
Nothing moved and that was over. So he wanted that extended time. As far as the softball is concerned, my end, it doesn't change, it's still this, the Friday, Saturday. We have a stipulation that the campers don't show up until Friday. Roger did ask if you were going to try to get that grant that you got last year for. He had fees of some kind.
Well, we for, we. They used ARPA funds, I think.
Yeah, COVID.
Careers funding.
Careers funding.
Careers funding.
Which we don't have anymore.
Okay.
We have ARPA and tourism falls exactly into that.
Yeah.
Category if we need to help doing something, maybe.
Even just looking for that, we got, with the increasing vendors, we'll be able to get the bankroll back up, hopefully this year.
Yeah.
If we can minimize some of our.
Expenses, sure.
That's going to be the biggest thing, because there's going to be something to, like, with Ernie's place changing hands, I don't know whether, oh gee, did you hear about the beer garden or anything? We don't have anybody doing.
As of yet, I haven't heard any. I've got no applications for beer gardens yet.
Okay, they're supposed to be, you remember the whiskey guy?
Yeah.
Isn't that true? Well, they're trying to move him down to, they have a Spencer in that little, what's that, little office that covers the area, not where the basketball courts are.
The picnic shelter?
Is that what it is?
Yeah, the big timber one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, to move that down to that location, but they have to, they have to make that application.
Yeah.
So hopefully they'll get that into you.
They, they've still got some time, but.
Well, yeah.
It goes by fast.
But, so we don't know what it's going to be for outside, like, like the beer gardens.
Yeah.
Which is always of course a big draw and so from there, we're still in our, trying to focus to keep things where the food vendors stay where they're at, where they're most in at. We've got, trying to find some way, for those of you who are, could remember, Jamboree used to extend all the way down, that's the really, Bill Orange Place and when, you know, there's always vendors around. Now, if you go towards the end of town, west of the town, it just isn't anything. Everything has moved all the way to Spencer Park and we don't know if that's an idea that the city likes or what we're expecting. I mean, it's always been the pool, Huckins Park. And now Spencer, we had everything on Spencer Park last year and it was, I paid a whole, because it was all there. They didn't go much, so. Food and it was a nice chain of events to go from the food down there and it kept everything, but it does limit the activity to other businesses that are other in the town.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and we, we're thinking we need to make those adjustments so that they get involved. The only thing that we have down here that they can afford is the library.
Yeah, and we used to have them right here in the open spaces. Now a tattoo place and they used to be in Subway's parking lot when it was a gas station. There would be vendors kind of dragging people towards Blue House, towards Lou's, right? I mean, there were activities down on this end, even if it's just four vendors, right, that sold something that's whirling and shiny.
One year the carnival was right here, right?
Oh, probably, yeah, when it was just empty land, yeah.
So, or, you know, that's his spot there next to Bill Orange Place. I mean, that, that was always full.
Yeah.
So I, we kind of provide you some input if, you know, if you guys get comments about some of those things, if we need to move that stuff, we need to move that. They're now getting some new people who are really taking an interest.
I, I think it would be nice if Creatures was open to it, of putting some vendors there, filling in the empty spots so you walk the whole town. That would be awesome. Maybe not the city hall side, because there's nothing here, but starting on this block here.
Yeah, but there could be.
There could be.
There's some reason why there couldn't be something historically about Vernonia that's put, that's a beautiful building.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, it has something, it has something to offer, even if it was just some sort of things that were on the outside of the building. And we used to have the art show, we'd have.
Right.
There was a time when all.
I entered a photo competition and got a blue ribbon.
Wow.
At the Legion, they used to have that.
Why would you do that in the town to take it on?
Energize, yeah.
So those are the things that we're looking for. If we can get that in and that stuff, it could be done, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
And I, gee, was there anything that you ran into last year?
No, it was last year was super mill.
The only thing that might be a little tricky and I don't know, did we move people out of the Verizon last year or you had them there?
We had them there.
So now they're going to be right next to the skate park. You've driven there and seen it? Okay, so that might be a little bit of a tricky thing, because there's going to be part people accessing that part of the park, so we might need to logistically figure out what we're going to do.
Well, the easiest way that we handled that was to, there's only one time entrance or one time exit to that spot.
Okay.
They know that.
And then they. Okay.
Wherever the general parking is going to be.
Yeah.
Where, but the point, the whole point of going to give that is they shouldn't leave.
Right.
They should show up on Friday and leave on Sunday and walk the rest of the time, you know, and now that we don't have to go up to where Spencer Park used to be.
Right.
And we don't have to have a truck there, they should, they shouldn't have to go.
Yeah.
They should just stay there and that's it.
Okay.
So I, yeah, I think legitimately we can make sure that that happens, because I think, you know, skate park is really a new deal.
Yeah.
I don't know of any other requests other than dumpsters.
Yep.
With the, the two big ones were the one by the scoreboard, on the scoreboard pad with a football field and then the other one.
Did we, we didn't get put one there, did we?
Well, he got put there, I don't remember, Roger, I had forgotten.
Oh, okay.
There was one there.
It was a 30 yarder?
It's big, it's a.
Oh, man, that's a lot.
I think we need a three yard one at the swimming hole, because people are going to eat.
There were some problems last year, two years ago with garbage collection.
But what's really sweet is, is the, I'm glad you're in charge of the logging show, did the kids.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
It was fantastic.
Absolutely. So now the traffic down to that.
Hopefully that gets bigger this year, right?
Yeah, and the traffic there on Saturday is equally as big as it is on Sunday, so yes, and that was one of the problems we had trouble cleaning up a few years ago, couldn't, we pay the, well, it's usually a class.
Yeah, for like prom or something.
Yeah, maybe something like, like the junior class.
Yeah.
Somebody does it. It usually ends up being a dad, his pickup and the board guy just could not keep up with what was in, or within talking, so. Yes, any, any advantage we, you know, and again, that's something we need to budget for, we'll budget for.
Yeah, well, let me, maybe I could get with Roger and go through where and what ones we could use that the city already has in the area, because that was the other thing I talked to him about, is having that person picking up the garbage, go to a offsite city already franchise dumpster that's not in the area, right? Like come up here at city hall and dump it or something.
Well, they, they make good money, maybe they'll make $500, $750 for the weekend.
Yeah, doing that task.
Doing that, plus you get cans.
Right.
You know, and the cans, now $10 a can, I mean, they're, they're going to make.
Money, yeah.
$1,800 to $2,000, cans.
Right.
Believe it or not, they make. So that's, that's the only thing that I have for the report. I'm here to answer questions that you might have, or if there was possible, so.
Just so I'm clear, the softball tournament does not go through the eighth.
No, it's not. We're definitely.
On Sunday, and I, that was something that I just happened to see and I don't want to.
So and he has, he has it Thursday through Monday?
That, yes, and that, I know.
But that isn't for people coming in.
Since Roger's here, not, not here, he can, I can, I'll speak candidly, and yes, he wants to make sure that he has everything together. There are some people camping on Thursday, they come in on Friday.
Okay.
And we've got those people taken care of who were early from before.
Yeah.
But he wants to make sure that he has, you know, they can get everything set up, get the Poussey Castles in, park, cordoned off, because that is, that is a real pain, but those people, I mean, just setting that up is.
Yeah, and did you guys play on that front field that they just redid by this, play on that field last year?
We, we played them all three of them.
There's four now.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, they just, the, they just turned it into a softball field again.
They didn't play by the ticket booth.
Yeah, the ticket booth, they just.
No, that's too small.
Are you sure it's too small now? Because they just pulled all the grass and redid it.
That's what.
The field's fine. We have softball.
Oh, it's too far.
End up in the dunk tank.
Yeah.
Bridge Street. It'll knock me into the dunk tank, home run.
No, we'd be, they, they had to wait for somebody to pitch so they could hit some more hard.
So that's where the kids zone is going.
That's where the kids.
Okay, got it, got it.
And that's where it's going to go back and then the car control will be in like it was.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Cars need to be on grass, motorcycles have to be on pavement, so that makes that parking, that's where the basketball court is, the parking area.
Yeah, that's the motorcycle, yeah. Okay.
Parade will be in the same, we're going to try to limit the parade, because, I mean, it's long, it's a long parade. It's usually anywhere from 45 minutes to an hour.
Hour, I think long was hour and 15, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, they had 27 log trucks.
Yeah.
We hope to not do that, but yeah, they're going to try to limit that.
Lots of candy.
Community bill.
It was.
The logging.
Yes. But you can only, you can only see so many log trucks. Guess well, little kids who's standing there.
And you can only hold up traffic for so long before people get in with me.
Yeah, that's true.
Anyway, we ready to move on and?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring you guys whatever we can't work, but I think we can.
We could.
And I'll talk to Roger about proposing if he wants to come and request for the fee again.
I'm sure he will.
Right.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay. He can meet me down there and lay the rest of the sod tomorrow.
Anyone like to make?
Want to talk about ARPA funds? Meet you at the skate park.
Yeah.
Moving on.
So we didn't have to approve this thing in here tonight?
You did.
That's what I'm trying to do, counselor. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this application? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this application?
I'll move, I'll move, we approve the application for January.
So moved, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second, yeah.
You call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Alan?
Aye.
Norman?
Aye.
Ash?
Hi.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Jan Hubert?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to staff report. SDC study direction, on page twenty-one.
So, at the April eleventh session, council requested that staff investigate the central cost to perform an SDC study. Um, I was kind of under the assumption that the engineers would do it, but then Stephanie, querying her peeps, her city recorder peeps, they had said that typically, it's not, it's like a different firm that does it, and it's between eight and ten thousand dollars. An SDC would be used to pay for the SDC study. So about two thousand per SDC, if you guys are wanting us to move that direction, but they did say they, that they recommended that the water master plan be done ahead of it, because you use that to base tweaks in your SDCs.
So when you say our current rates are too low, I don't need an exact number, but is it like, so like what, or a little?
It's, the SDC is eight hundred and fifty dollars, that doesn't pay for anything.
Mm-hmm.
And so the idea with an SDC is that it will pay for that infrastructure, you can probably explain it.
Increase capacity.
Increase capacity, that house brings up this system.
I'm saying, specific to the other cities, our size that you spoke of, are we like dramatically?
Wow.
Okay, so I would call that your max.
It's gonna go from eighty-five hundred probably to sixteen to seventeen thousand.
If you guys approve.
I mean, if you approve it, that's, the report's gonna be something like that. Um, you know, Beaverton at thirty thousand dollars cash upfront, before you even submit your plans, on an empty lot.
Mm-hmm. They actually weigh the needs of the city more than what other cities are trying, so they'll use the master plans, and that's why they recommended waiting, if we're gonna be doing a new water mask, water master plan, to wait until that's done, because if you use the old one, it'll be different than the new one.
Yeah, it's not talking about future projects.
It's about the future projects, and all the projects for water, wastewater, streets, free inventory, that are coming onto the system in the next, whatever the formula is, the X amount of years.
And Stephanie, when I were talking about this some time ago, and she had seen something where it's kind of like what we're gonna talk about with the utility rate calculator, where it just, you plug in some numbers every five years, or two years, or something, and it just tells you what your new SD, SDC should be. So it isn't even like a, something that you have to guess about, like us wait fifteen years too long to, to move forward on updating them. It's just a formula that you plug in, and every couple of years, you just gradually go up.
You could do that, or you can do it by percentage.
Yeah, and then you do a new study in X amount of years.
Yeah.
But we haven't done it.
For a long time.
So what's that expected timeline on doing the water master plan?
I don't know, we have to do the funding with that.
Yeah.
It's a project of Angi on. I know it's, it being talked about.
Yeah, it's hard, because until you actually put the funding there, get a, get a bid, put the funding there, and then have them do it, and our engineers are kind of swamped with our stuff right now.
Yeah, so that, it's on their, it's on their plate, they know it's coming, but we need, in the budget cycle, for council and the budget committee to approve that expenditure, and then with that, we would like to have this approved also, so that we can, we'll trigger once the water master plan is done, or if the water master plan takes a year, then this will just go on to the next year's budget, but.
Yeah.
It's SDC fund, it doesn't hurt as much, I guess, to do the study, so.
This is basically a new line item, then, in the budget.
No, because it would be, it would be contract services number in the SDC, so it'd be two thousand from each of them.
That's right. We'd budget out.
You'd do it out of each individual one.
So it would be a few of lines.
Well, those lines exist in all of them, they only show up if they're used, and then they have to stay till they disappear, right, the four years or whatever. So they're all in the budget, but if there's no money allocated there, then they're not there.
And I feel like if we're, if we feel like we're significantly under, on our rates, then it makes sense to do the study, so, an investment, too.
Sounds like we're getting a, sounds like we're getting a cart before the horse, why don't we focus on getting the water study done? It can take a year or two anyway, right?
No, the water study shouldn't take more than three months.
Don't have a budget for it, right?
Well, no, but we're proposing it in the draft budget, that we want to do it.
Saying is, if we approve both, then there's no holdup, we finish that, we have it.
Okay.
So the two thousand out of each fund would be there, if the work drags into the next fiscal year, it'll still be there, it'll just go back into the available cash on hand, and you'll permit it in the next one. Doesn't go anywhere.
It just was.
Yeah, and they could probably even overlap a little bit, because the.
You could do the other one.
The study's gonna be looking at streets, parks, wastewater, all of those individually. So, I mean, if we had a timeline, we got some.
All the ones.
The water master plan, and, and it was like, okay, this is gonna be done in three months, and that's about the timeline for, to finish everything up on the, uh, SDC of, uh, study, you know, we could, they could both be kind of overlapping for a little bit in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, once we see the water master plan wrapping up, then we'll start the RFP process for a firm to, yeah, do the study.
And, and I'm gonna assume that any, whoever we hire is going to propose that some kind of system to increase it incrementally, and, but that should be something that we should expect out of the process, because this is, I mean, it's gonna be a big transition from, say, a home builder, or anybody building one house before and after, because we're gonna have no choice but to kind of pull the Band-Aid off, and that's kind of one of those things, in the future, we need to be incrementing it up every couple of years, so it's never a harsh thing. I mean, this is a kind of a good lesson.
Actually.
Yeah, we've learned that with, with utility rates, and so that's, that should be something that as an organization, we should, and I'm sure will come out.
If I recall correctly, they typically, you adopt your fee structure in your SDC ordinance, and then it automatically will up X percentage, actually, the one we currently have, it just was never done that way, is it goes up every year by X percentage for inflation, and then at the end of a certain, set period, or if something crazy happens with the economy, and it's just not to scale anymore, then you do another study, and you have new numbers come out of it.
So those would just go up in the masterpiece schedule?
Some of the people I talked to, they were getting ready to do their SDC study, they're like, oh, we haven't done it in ten years, which is insane, I'm like, girl, you have no.
Stephanie, how much do you say the SDC fee is on streets?
Eight fifty-eight.
So, for someone like we were just talking about earlier, it's gonna pay fifty, or sixty, or eighty grand, the engineer to do the street, they still have to pay that fee, too?
Yes.
It's just kind of adding insult to injury there, isn't it?
It's the cost of building.
Yeah, everybody before them's paid it.
Yeah.
Too, and done whatever.
Well, I can see if someone built a house, and there's a street all finished in front of their house, they're contributing to, to the, but if you're putting in the street, I just wonder if you, isn't that kind of double dipping?
Not really, I mean, you could build on a street that already exists, but then you can make an argument, if my street already exists, then why should I have to pay the fee? So no matter what your scenario is, you can make an argument against what's required. Does that make sense, or is that just confusing?
Well, I see what you're saying, I'm just worried, we're gonna get right down to about a zero population growth here, real quick, around here.
We're still, well, we're still a heck of a deal.
Yeah.
I have probably six building permits on my desk right now, being processed, and every one of them knows about the fee, couple of them are.
Houses don't, more than a week.
The other ones are moving forward. I even had somebody already pay theirs to move forward, so.
People will continue to build houses in Vernonia, even after we up SDCs, because we're still cheaper. Like I said, in Beaverton, it's thirty thousand dollars, and their school district has a six thousand dollar SDC on top of that, for every single, single-family home that's built.
And just even water connections, I think twenty-five hundred dollars, over the hill, it could be ten thousand dollars.
I remember it was twelve fifty here, for water connections, yeah.
They didn't pay for stop time.
It's not helping people who build a house in a city and expect city amenities, to save them a little money, and then be like, but also, we can't do all these things that we should as a city.
But then having, you know, having SDCs, though, also, we, we've never really had anybody do it, because we haven't had any subdivisions or anything come, but if we had the opportunity for somebody to subdivide a piece of land, and bring twenty-five new houses onto the tax rolls, having that SDC money to help them connect big water and sewer up to their property, or when we bring in these other parts of, when we switch around the, um, UGB, you know, there isn't good sewer access to the area that we're targeting. So there's gonna have to be, we want to bring that into the city, so that it gets developed into dense residential, but the city's gonna have to do, put in a trunk of some kind, for sewer alone, probably water, too, and.
This money.
That's where that money comes from.
Yeah.
Well, like Louisiana Avenue, I mean, all those people have paid SDCs, and we're doing this new connection process, or connection project, SDCs will be used for some of those, because we'll be increasing capacity for water, sewer, storm.
Yeah.
Traffic.
Streets.
Yeah.
There'll be some piecemeal in there from SDCs, and without those fees, we wouldn't be able to tackle those projects.
I don't know that it's the best analogy, but it can kind of be thought of, it's kind of like your auntie in the poker game, you want to come and build and be part of the community, and, and further the game along here, that's kind of, the SDCs are kind of like you're buying into the, into the game, into the community. You're serious about coming here and.
Yeah.
Being part of the community.
Any other discussions about this?
This is just for the study.
Okay.
And it's in the draft budget, so hopefully Budget Committee goes with it, if you're interested, right, I mean, we're gonna put it, this is you directing staff to put two thousand in each of those SDCs for a potential SDC study.
Understand, in a form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, that we direct staff to allocate two thousand dollars in each of the five SDC funds, um, in their contract services line.
So moved, is there a second?
SDC study.
I'll second. Thank you, Counselor Norman, did you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Um, Mayor Norman?
Aye.
Ash?
Aye.
For Alan?
Aye.
For Norman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, Ben brought us the staff report.
Well, I think you have something before Ben, aren't you?
No, no.
Oh, your new business, you're still new business, okay.
So normally, every year, we get the proposed rates to you guys, um, timing didn't work out, the first three pages are some, um, kind of just some nuanced, uh, minor changes to the way we calculate rates. I don't want to go over that, um, tonight, to give you, to give everybody a chance to read it, understand, come up with questions. I'll be back in two weeks, and we'll talk about that. Really what I wanted, you guys, council going into the budget process, to see what the proposed rates are looking like at this point. Uh, it's important, remember, they aren't going, they'll change a little bit, but they're, they're pretty close.
And what the Budget Committee gives us.
Yep, on the budget, so after the budget process is done, then you'll get final.
Hold the ad hoc meeting.
Proposed, um, numbers, um, no big surprises, other than the water base rate is gonna go up a pretty good chunk, um, consumption and sewer is, is, is kind of in line with inflation there, and then the average sewer, kind of the, the budgets as they stand now, result in the average utility bill being, um, just under ten dollars more per month. So, um, happy to answer any questions about the rate calculations. Oh, and this year, after feedback, the last couple of years from, um, members of council and committees, um, there's a new key that's numbered in the rate calculations, which explains exactly what that number is, and what it does, why it's there, um, so, to help, um, to help follow along with the, with the rate calculations, so.
So, if we, well, you want us to read this? If we have any questions, come in and talk to you, and.
Shoot me an email, I'm gonna come back in two weeks to talk about these minor changes to, uh, how we compute rates.
Okay.
I want everybody to have a chance, because it's, there's kind of some subtlety there and nuance, I want everybody a chance to read it, but going into the budget, you guys are starting budget tomorrow, Dale brought it to my attention today, and Stephanie was.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
The next Tuesday, not.
Council meeting.
Yeah.
You are starting budget before the next council meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was off a, off a week there, but I wanted you guys to see what, the budgets as they stand now, and the budget, you're gonna see kind of what's approximately gonna happen to utility rates there, so.
Right. When are we gonna have the rate review that council was promised this year?
It follows the budget, so the budget numbers have to go into the calculator, so it's really dependent on what the Budget Committee, council, and the citizens come up with, cut or add in those two funds that are plugged into this. It'll follow the draft budget.
Okay, because I'm, I guess I'll do my dill, dill, this out, I'm, I'm afraid that that's the budget.
They don't need to know this, because this is just a tool, in which we input the numbers that we get as staff from the budget document, at the end of budget. So if they say, we want new sprinkler heads and all this such and such, and that increases the water budget, then that number going in here will kick out a different number. Ben's just explaining to you exactly how the calculator works, and how we charge the fees, so that you kind of know when you're talking about increases or decrease in water and sewer, those will affect the rate.
It was always kind of just a courtesy, getting this to City Council and Public Works Committee, before the budget process started, so that you can see what, what the, kind of what the changes in rates are gonna look like going into the budget process. It was more of just kind of a understanding what the budget you're gonna be looking at in the coming month translates to, as far as a rate change. So it was always just a, a courtesy thing to get that out, um, before the budget process started, and timing, and Angie being out of town, instead, just didn't quite, it didn't quite work out. But, at any rate, that's what I, that was the important part, I wanted to get the, the new proposed rates to you, so, they may change a little bit, but that's what we're looking at, um, right now, as far as rates go.
What happened to sewer? I thought we were pretty flush in the sewer department, and we're still raising that one.
Well, yeah, but all the costs of treating and everything go up incrementally, so, we're not, our goal was to kind of have a gentle slope to the costs of what it does, doing business costs us, and not have this volatile up and down, so that's what we've been trying.
I knew water was running pretty, pretty much what we had expected, or maybe a little below, but we're adding a hundred grand to water, or something, with the six dollar increase?
Well, it's about sixty thousand.
Yeah.
A dollar on the rate is ten thousand.
Ten, eleven thousand.
Yeah.
Sixty, seventy thousand right there.
Mm-hmm. And those are all just the variables that affect it. Could be chlorine going up, could be fixes to the water plant. Last year, we've installed the baffles that were in last year's budget to lengthen the treatment time. So there's just weird variables that go into it.
Our labor.
And that's a pretty...
Considerably this year.
Two percent, a 2% increase in any rate, especially this year is actually pretty, pretty good.
Yeah.
Well, you're saying it's gonna be 10% higher for the average person?
That's because...
In the total bill?
In the total bill.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big... There's a couple of things that we're proposing doing here that, reminding that also, when you get through the proposal of the... Part of that was putting money aside? Carry forward.
Yeah.
That change is gonna...
That's the only...
That's gonna be a one-year hit.
That's a one-year deal. But as far as like the, yeah, I mean, there's, these are just what the costs are.
Yeah.
Or what Angie has got in the budget and what they translate to a rate. You know, you guys will have to discuss the, the budget process or through the budget process, you're gonna, you're gonna finalize a budget. This doesn't care what that budget is. We just plug the numbers in and that's how it comes out. I think a 2% in, I mean, a 2% increase in, in...
Sewer.
In sewer basin consumption is pretty reasonable. If every year was 2%, we'd be, increase would be golden. So again, the water is, and Angie will talk about the water stuff in the budget process, but yeah, the, for reasons.
Yeah.
The, the budget, the water budgets going up this year. And then something else that, that it's kind of, we did this about four years ago, I think. On the last page, you have the bear rates, which are calculations without any of the adjustments. It shows you exactly what the budgets and the loans would require if we were starting day zero with a fresh start. And that's a nice comparison to see that something wacky isn't happening. If you look at any of those numbers, the budgets alone, before the adjustment, carryover, deductions, even adding in the reserves are pretty much right in line with what the bear rates would be. So that's something else to, to take a look at. But yeah, unfortunately, the average water bill is gonna go up, Councilor Allen, this year.
Are we the highest in the state of Oregon?
No.
No.
I know Portland bitch is about 50 or 60 bucks a month.
Yeah, their pie is just cut into a million pieces.
Big drop.
Cut into 920 or whatever.
Are you sure that's just not water?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
It's just how, how many people are eating pie and there's, we don't have thousands of customers. We have like 1,000.
Yeah, more susceptible to say a raise in one of the budgets going up slightly.
Yeah.
We're susceptible to it.
So do we get new connections last year?
Did we what?
How many new connections did we get?
Um, that's a good question.
Yeah, we can find that out.
I will tell you what our average, how many average bill connections from last year to this year we increased, which is a better...
Tell them.
Yeah.
But he'll read through it and he'll be back to answer all your questions in two weeks.
And if you have more about these, these are just minor proposals to help us smooth out. The, the main point when you read through that is we've been doing this for five or six years now, and we've just gotten down where there's no left. We've shed all the extra money. There's no extra money left. And now we're just hovering along this line. So we're just ticking back and forth. And so we just want to take a couple of small measures to take some of the subjectivity out of that and just have a nice, easy climb over time and not just be doing this up and down, trying to track and hit this exact number every single year. It's, like I said in here, it's, it's great to give somebody a quarter a month discount off their utility bill this year, but you're not, you're gonna bring that back and more the following year, and if not, the year after that. So rates, we're to the point now, rates should really never go down unless we get...
Pay off the loan.
Pay off a loan or for some weird reason, the star's aligned and we end up with an extra 40 grand in a water, sewer budget for some reason. Yeah. So ask any, read through that. I'll be back in two weeks to answer any questions. And like I said, there's the, there's going into the budget process, that's kind of what you can expect the rates to be coming out the other side.
Thank you, Ben. We'll be on to the last item of new business. It's another applicant.
Sheila Perrow.
Uh, she's for budget. She's on Public Works. She's wanting to be on the Budget Committee.
On the Budget Committee. Okay. Sorry.
I mean, recommend. Thanks. Could be a great, great asset on the Public Works Committee and the same would be on the Budget Committee.
Okay.
I think very detail oriented, very interested. And she's had a lot of experience in public work.
Yeah, her experience is excellent.
Give her a copy of this thing. She'll probably get one. And two budgets going back.
Oh, you're ready.
Okay. If I have unanimous consent to appoint Sheila Perrow, I believe that's how you pronounce her last name, to the Budget Committee.
Somebody drop it off.
Go set.
Okay.
Did we have somebody drop off the budget?
Get a couple.
We have three citizen members now.
Oh, we need another one?
We need two more.
Oh.
If you know anyone that's interested in city budget, that's a citizen.
That lives in the city.
Got to join.
Sounds like, and looks like I have unanimous consent from the council to appoint Sheila Perrow to the Budget Committee. It's my pleasure to do so right now. Thank you. Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 2022-05, authorizing an extended enterprise zone for a fourth and fifth year to Control Solutions Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor, Paul Vogel here from Columbia Economic Team. We made this request to, to the City of Vernonia as well as the other five enterprise zone sponsors. Control Solutions is a company that's qualified for a standard enterprise zone benefit. They completed construction last year. They've, they've met their wage requirements of 150% covered wage. They've met their employment requirement, employment increase requirement of 10%, but they've actually met that and exceeded it, hitting I think 30% increase. And, and they, so they qualify for a standard enterprise zone exemption, but have requested an additional two years as they, they're growing. And I, I've got, I've got the founder and president, Kevin Wick, here with us also. He, you might like to ask him some questions. But in a nutshell, they, they data loggers, they fabricate data loggers, which are a key ingredient in protecting vaccines. So it's been a brisk and busy couple, three years for them. But it's also been a business in an industry, in a sector where a lot of new competition has come in because of the pandemic. And so Mr. Wick and his company are finding a need to diversify into other, other sectors, museum and other temperature controlled sectors in order to maintain their workforce and maintain their, their growth. Healthy company and, and as I say, a valid application. And we would request that the City of Vernonia favorably consider this request for an extended zone application.
Very good, Paul. And thank you for, for being a part of this lengthy council meeting.
It's, Mr. Mayor, I have to say, I, I've been making notes to several of my friends, letting them know that they really need to attend the city council meeting more often and, and get a civics lesson because this has been a great example of the hard work that councils do, that a lot of people never see. And there's very little of it that's fun and some of it's really, really hard. So it's, it's been a good, been a good refresher course for me.
Thank you, Paul. And I'm, I'm sure the City of Vernonia appreciates all the work you're doing out, what you're doing. I was kind of curious as to, I understand the pharmacies with a little bit of your explanation with the vaccination program, but what does the farm to fork chain entail?
Yeah. So basically, we provide temperature and humidity monitoring devices. Farm to fork would be specifically temperature, whether it's greenhouse agriculture growing, transportation and refrigerated trucks to the stores, and also, you know, cold storage, preservation, and then of course your, your end grocery store or markets would all be monitored, which they are today.
Thank you, Kevin. Oh, any questions for Mr. Vogel or?
I got one.
Go ahead, Jar.
It's for Kevin Wick. Kevin, if we pass this and everybody else does, how much is this gonna save you as far as capital, be able to do the things that you want to do?
Approximately $22,000 for each of those additional two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or... Anyone like to make a motion to approve the two-year extension to their program?
Resolution.
Yeah.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion. Mayor, I'll move the, we adopt resolution number 22-05, a resolution of the City of Vernonia authorizing extended enterprise zone benefits for a fourth and fifth year to Control Solutions, Inc., located in the South Columbia County Enterprise Zone.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there a second?
One second.
So moved by Counselor Allen. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hubert.
Hi.
Counselor Allen.
Hi.
Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Matt.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Is there any correspondence? None. City Administrator report.
Okay, you guys have my report in front of you. The regulator came into Ferguson. So hallelujah. Now our only problem is, is that our HVAC company is booked out for three weeks. So they're gonna try and fit us in. He's got the regulator on his desk though. So finally get that generator up and running over there. I'm working, I did get an email in relation to the Rose Avenue building. There's a Boy Scouts that are looking to do some plantings. They said, is there any place you need trees? I don't need any more trees. But they are probably going to do a project landscaping underneath the Senior Center Food Bank sign on Weed Avenue, kind of dressing it up with some plantings because that's their project they need to complete. So I'm hoping to hear back from them soon, but I think that'll be a good project for them to have, something they've done in the City of Vernonia. The skate park, so we were able to secure enough sod to completely sod the skate park and kind of eliminate the need for the hydro seeding or seeding, thanks to a donation to Vernonia Boosters from Randy Hulse again and Mayor Rick Hobart. So we placed 5,500 square feet of sod today and then we'll place another 5,500 square feet tomorrow. So fun. And Counselor Webb was there all day in a, in a rain outfit, totally muddy. Multiple people fell in the mud. It was, I have video of my staff rolling down the hill to like celebrate they finished a side of it. Hopefully he's got some icy hot and so we are planning for the grand opening. I sent you guys all an invite email for the 23rd at noon. I think it's gonna be great. We're gonna have the boosters doing the free lunch for kids. There'll be free raffles. There'll be things they can purchase there. And then Cody Jenkins has the mobile skate trailer. You've seen it there maybe a couple of days and he fixes boards there, sells merchandise. So he's gonna be there and his wife is also gonna be there. She does the Dominican food through the Senior Center. She's the office manager of the Senior Center and then she has a contract with them to use their certified kitchen to create her homestyle foods that she grew up with that are really tasty. So she's gonna have a little booth selling some of those there. And then the light poles, we're gonna have cones over the conduit that are sticking up. And then I've been working with Dawn. The light poles are scheduled to come middle of May. So by June 1st, we should have a lit skate park at night. So that'll be great. The waterline install, an electrical conduit install at the cemetery is almost complete. We have a couple of valve boxes left to install before we charge the system with water. And then we do have, once we get a little drier, we'll have additional cleanup work. And Robert Watts is gonna go finish dialing it in and put down the gravel that's stockpiled there and kind of finalize it ahead of Memorial. Related to cemetery, I did, we did attend the cemetery committee meeting to discuss Memorial Day activities. The plan's gonna be that we're going to put up the big flags the Friday before Memorial Day at 6:00 PM. So if anyone would like to help, we're still using the very heavy steel poles until budget time and a new fiscal year, maybe we can purchase the lighter weight aluminum poles, but we're going with the originals this year. The reader board project's nearing completion. The electrical work scheduled for him to pull the line and install the 20 amp circuit there next week. And then hopefully we'll get a dry day where the top cabinet can get installed. That's, Mike's available on a dry day. That's what he told us. So we're kind of just waiting that out. We are doing though, at the request of the InterCultural Society, a plug-in, a lockable plug right there at the reader board because they had talked about that blue spruce becoming potentially the future Christmas tree. So we are putting plug-in on that line so that they can use that if they choose. The street trees, so I'm mentioned at our work session for my evaluation that I might spoke, done the meeting with Katie from ODF. And there are two types of trees. I have them pictured here. Vanessa, which is a ironwood, I guess is the name of the type of tree. And then the Kendrick Spirit Oak. Both of them would require, if, if we were gonna put them in, the full distance of the pavers to be pulled and that whole planter strip to be a planter strip because they only have the three feet of width. So they need the full length of the planter area to kind of have connectivity and branch out and survive there without potentially popping sidewalks. And then I attached here an aerial map. We only have these highlighted yellow parcels that are interested in having any trees, which we were talking about would be okay if it wasn't symmetrical. And this, you guys could choose to have a future discussion on this. I just wanted to bring it to you because I had it laid out and had talked to Kate and she sent me the two types of trees. But really it would be those sections on one side of the street. So just for your information to be thinking about it for follow-up meeting. And that's what I have for you. And that's what I have for you. Have any questions?
Information for the 501(c)(3) first?
Yeah, so I haven't found in our, anything in set of ARPA funds. What, in reading through the articles you sent, I'm wondering if schools had a different version or they have a different rule than ours? Because ours is very specific to that we could give it to a 501(c)(3) if they were doing COVID. Ours is really infrastructure or COVID, right? Or loss of revenue from COVID. So we couldn't find anywhere in our interim rule where we can just outright give someone money.
So in reading that, there was a link in your article, Counselor Allen, and it, it showed all the schools that have received that money. And Vernonia had two projects in there. That was separate funding out of that whole program that went directly to the schools.
And theirs was, did they get the, I believe they got the front door glass doors. Yeah.
The trap door.
Yeah, so that people just can't get in.
Something for classroom door, something. Someone on the net has said 1.7 million for 47J.
There's $500 million in Oregon for schools. That's how they built, so I did some research on it too. That's how they built the new gym and grandstands. And they used the COVID excuse of they had, which is true, they had nowhere for all the kids to socially distance recess or cover to be watching it. So that's how they, they funded that. And it was the same application process as our school went through. They saw, I mean, I didn't talk to anybody at the school, but based off of the clicking of the links and reading that our school went through to get the new doors.
Right.
So they could have gone through the same application process and there is still money available.
Yeah, I did a little bit of reading online and you can see like you, you look at different cities throughout the country. It's almost like they're using it, one city uses it, another city uses it for something totally different and they all make up different excuses of what they. So it's, it's really hard to pinpoint down exactly, I know they changed the guidance to January 21, but buys them, I should say. But it's about as clear as mud.
Right.
But it wasn't city ARPA used for that grandstand. It was school ARPA, I think what they're saying, so.
Yeah, it's different.
Well, yeah, I don't know. They still, it, it's still classified under ARPA. I mean, somewhere in that article, it was under.
Well, and I think the feds had the interim rule. If you were a city and you were getting it, they wanted it spent for this. But then like the state of Oregon got money, they divvied it out to four million per senator. That's how we got Louisiana connection money through Betsy, but it wasn't specific to COVID, but the senators kind of had freedom to fund, pick what in their district they wanted to fund in a way where we probably couldn't have sold us spending all that on Louisiana ourselves if we're following the interim rule that we were given. So I think that's different.
It confused me, just searching. You even talked about doing infrastructure if it was a critical need.
Yeah.
What's a critical need? We routing a couple lines or adding something for better critical, is that critical? I mean, how do you classify what's critical? How do you classify what's somebody lost? You could, I mean, you can say what, one cent? You lost one cent for an event? We can give you a million dollars. I, I don't know how you classify that. I know 501(c)s are, are available.
Yeah.
And I do know the boosters is 501(c)(3) now, and I do know they help out a lot of kids in Vernonia that obviously didn't play sports and lost.
Right.
So maybe that's a direction we can go. I think their budget's about online, maybe 50,000 a year or something, but.
Yeah. I know they did get part of the donation that helped us finish the sod. They did get a donation for a section of that money to go towards the, and at this point, what they're currently working on is the concession stand restroom facility. They're, they're going to, that's their phase one. And then the, the stadium structure is phase two. So right now they're trying to fund the restroom because right now the kids either have to go all the way into the, by the wrestling room, all the way into the school or porta potties, which after a couple of high school boys going there, I'm not interested, but I'll, I'll probably walk home, but, um, so I know that's their phase one. So if we were going to give them money, it would be going to that phase, not so much the stadium or the covered thing as it would be going to, to concessions.
Do we have to have stipulations on it if we give it to them or since they're a 501(c)(3), that's their deal to do what they want?
So what I'm saying is with my kind of weird rule follower, I don't see it in the interim rule where I could say to council, go for it. So that's why I'm concerned about just because it doesn't meet when I went through the interim rule, 501(c)(3)'s were in there, but it was specific to COVID issue. It wasn't just.
Right, well, we said, okay, we're going to give you this money, but it can't go for the grandstands or the school thing, but it could go toward helping kids with fees or, or uniforms or equipment because all the kids lost out. I mean, and fundraising lost out during COVID.
Yeah.
I think that would qualify.
I don't know. I'd be nervous about it qualifying if we can't get a definitive answer and having someone come back to us someday and saying, no, you need to.
So who do we call?
Well, I, we tried to connect with the guy that we typically connect with. And that's the thing, each person, like the rules are all different. Each person you talk to is going to give you a different rule. Do we believe that person? And then do we risk outlaying the cash and not doing it appropriately and some other auditing happens? And we are required to pay it back.
I'm, cities across the United States are doing stuff that I'm shaking my head at. I mean, they're setting up funds for people to remodel and paint their buildings out of ARPA money.
I know, but as my dad would say, if your friend jumps off a cliff, are you going with him? I, I'm nervous to jump off the cliff.
Basically.
It's something I can't like honestly say, this is this, or this is why. But if you guys are.
I think our attorney could help us on that, can he?
Yeah.
You know, even in this project in Newport, I mean, there was, there were some questions as to what they could the fund for, and they, they actually built the grand, their new grandstands with federal relief funds. I don't, and, you know, and there are some questions. It says, was closely tied to the pandemic. I mean.
Right.
There's some, they went out on a limb a little bit there.
Yeah.
It's almost like nobody's really doing anything to check or something, but we're worried that we do something, then all of a sudden they check, right?
There, that's a different pot of funds. So they had to go through an application process and get it approved before they actually started the project. So it's, there's, there's the big ARPA fund. And then there's different rules for states, counties, cities, tribes, schools.
Right.
Everyone has their own set of rules. So ours is how many hundreds of pages?
At 151.
151 pages of rules. So that's just ours.
Just for ours.
Yep, then the state has their own rules, then tribes have theirs, counties have theirs, et cetera.
Can I get a copy of ours so I can understand it better so talk?
We got it.
Yeah, you have it in your.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can resend it. I can resend it to the Skanska one.
I'll print it out or something and.
Yeah.
Try to highlight some areas where I think it's legit or something.
Well, that's what, I went and searched 501(c)(3). That's what we did is we took that PDF and made it searchable and stopped at every point where 501(c)(3) came up. And all of them were COVID. You had to prove it was a COVID, they lost a COVID expenditure, or they did this or this. All of it was COVID.
It's like they want to just hire a million counselors and call that helping somebody. That's what their scenes are doing. They're hiring these therapists and counselors all over the place. See that really helping too many people, but.
Yeah.
It's like putting people on payroll. I mean, what happens when that money runs out?
Yeah.
Dawn?
Right.
And we're not talking about putting people on payroll at least for something that's temporary money.
My, my other concern too is we got to fully flesh out what our projects are with the next pot of money, what we'll have left. You know, I mean, there's other projects. Man, I'm here in the north, south connection might be some of it, so.
Yeah, with the cost of asphalt going up.
And stay straight and not straight.
Well, yeah, well, whether those. Well, five, but.
Yeah.
Good.
My, my concern infrastructure-wise is what the vacuum testing shows. Cause once we test and we know what those are leaking into the system causing the INI problem, it may be that what staff, the prudent choice for staff and council would be to line as many of those, seal off that water table water from getting into the sewer system from as many of the damaged ones as we can. And we know that the price we got a couple of years ago was $2,000 per manhole, an average of 10 feet of depth. So I'm sure that's gone up a little bit, but if we have 15 horrible manholes, I'm going to propose to you guys, we go and fix them all instantaneously. And that's why I worry about giving the money ahead of that coming back and knowing what that ugly picture looks like because it may be that I say, no, there's not 15, there's 35, right? I mean, because we really have never tested pulling water into the manholes. We've smoke tested what's coming in from other connections or holes or disconnections, but not what's coming in just on its own. That's my concern about earmark. If we do all the things and there's still money, then, uh, you know, let's find a way to do the best that can be used and seen in the community, but it worries me a little. I know it's not a sexy project, the manholes, but I think it's a worthwhile project for the system.
Got to do something to stop the problem, otherwise we could be in more trouble.
Right. We're going to have more.
And there's a few people that think it's super sexy.
Right. That, I could go to Beet Avenue and get every one of those people to come here and say it's A number one.
Yeah, I think anything with ARPA at this point, we should be looking at
If you read the.
All the options and the, the priority, not just what qualifies, let's do it.
What I got from the ARPA articles that I was reading is the gist of ARPA was to get some of the money to the street level, not sewer projects. I mean, the, 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 the meaning of the fund was to get some of it out at the street level to, to help people. It wasn't just for, but this is for the city 100% of it. That's why.
The, but in my job, I see the helping people as solving the sewer system so the future people in this, on the sewer system are not negatively affected by us having to go out for a $2 million loan to fix the problem we could fix with the finite resource we have right now. That's how I see helping people and and that's why I said it's not sexy is it's not something the whole community feels happy-go-lucky about. They may not even know we did it.
Cause they don't know about a future charge that you're paying.
Or a problem that doesn't happen because we solved this. That's how I see it, but I understand these things different.
They might see it because it could lower the sewer rate.
Right, or, or keep it for more years.
You're never going to lower them. They're going to raise them 2% every single year forever.
Right.
So that's not going to happen.
But if you have to go spend $60,000 to line manholes, you're looking at $6 increase.
Oh, I understand that. There was 30,000 on the line item when I first come to council that never got done. I didn't see that line item get pulled off and the sewer rates go down.
I didn't fully own that.
We were going to line them before and there was 60,000, I believe, in their contract services. We didn't do it. I didn't see us lower the rates that next year.
Just carry forward. We didn't, we have lowered rates.
We did lower the rates.
We dropped.
We probably cut over time.
Since we paid off the federal loan to the sewer. Anyway.
I mean, rates benefit everybody. It's not sexy at all.
Leaving it better than we found it is kind of been my mantra and my mantra to my staff is we're, everything, even if it's a rock we turn over and it's a big pain in our backside or it's trouble or it's people yelling at Stephanie. Our goal is when we don't work here anymore, that we leave it better than we found it. And so if, if it's a possibility, if we get these things done or if we have $10,000 or whatever to go for indigent children scholarships to play sports and getting kids outside and active, if we have the money to do it and we can finagle it in the ARPA thing, then I'm going to be all for that. But it worries me ahead of knowing what the ugly picture is with the vacuum testing, what's on the other side of that to give 50,000 or some big chunk that if we actually may need it. We made vacuum tests and we only need to do 10 manholes and then you guys have this discussion again, but I fear with what the manholes look like when we graded them, because you can tell staining and markers that we test for, we know there's going to be a few. But that's just me and you guys can decide what you want and I'll pull it off.
I just thought of things as remember, you came to us first and said, help me come up with ideas.
Well, that's your job. I don't, I don't get to do that because it's not in my budget until you guys approve it. So I did ask for advice.
Any other questions for the CEO? CA, I guess.
Whatever, I'm going with it.
Thank you, Josette. I need to apologize to the chief. I passed you up on business from the department. Do you have any business, chief?
Okay.
It wasn't, it was fine that you passed me up. This is my first day back.
Yeah.
A little while.
Welcome back, chief. We missed you.
I'll, I'll be in and out over the next couple of months dealing with the state stuff from my stepdad's passing, but
I'm sorry to hear that.
Anyway, I'm here. The only thing I could probably report is the injured deer animal euthanization issue completely shot down by the insurance company.
Really?
Oh, go. Don't, I'm going to do it, be covered. Leave it to law enforcement.
They might, they might be in cahoots because I just got, uh, email that the USPA is trying to get a wildlife services specialist in the Columbia County and they're looking for us to contribute money to it. And so I said, I want a whole bunch more information before I'm even willing to take it to council because who does this person work for? How often are they going to be in Vernonia? Like I had all my questions. So I'll be bringing that to you guys probably May 2nd, a more detailed proposal from them. So it may jointly serve us if, but only if they're readily available when someone hits a deer.
So what was the issue? Were we trying to get someone with a gun to dispatch or just a sledgehammer?
Just with a bolt gun.
Yeah.
Something that doesn't fire a projectile at all.
Yeah.
Um, and they said too much liability on the city.
So if the deer was thrown in the back of a pickup truck and hauled outside of city limits, there's no issue?
Yeah, there's no, there's no risk.
That's a fishing game issue.
That's going to be a fishing game issue.
Yeah, no matter what.
Yeah. Regardless of how we decided to do it or what path we decided to, to go with, law enforcement is going to be involved at some point, whether it be fishing game or local law enforcement or county or some, somebody's going to be notified that something happened with this animal. Those are probably more of the key components, but as far as having somebody volunteer to go do this job when we're not available, the insurance company is an absolute no.
Interesting. I think it gets me off the hook.
Yeah, there you go. You're off the hook.
Although you might want to adopt some of those protocols for your department.
Well, we'll probably, Josette and I can discuss it later on a little bit. We might just have to increase that priority for that call to make sure that it's something that somebody's called out for. Instead of leaving an animal suffer for 12 hours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go up, take it to the insurance company front door and let them watch.
How's your new applicant coming, chief?
Still in background.
Okay.
That'll probably be going on for a little while. They got to finish their, their background portion that ends up being about 300 pages.
Wow.
Once they're done with that, then we'll proceed to our next steps.
Okay. All right, thank you. Action item summary.
Okay. So I have that May 2nd, Ben's coming back to discuss the rate review document you have in front of you. Also at that meeting, we're going to be bringing the MOU for the reader board between the, the MOU between the four entities. Also on that meeting, hopefully Hazen Camp can come, um, show us the tightened up budget numbers. And then you guys can discuss that decision if you're interested in using, uh, funds for cameras.
Verified, yes, by the way.
Okay, good. We're, staff's going to notify Jim Bryson, he's been appointed to the library board. Staff's going to notify Brett Costley, the painting must be done prior to May 14th. And staff will notify Sheila Pro that she's approved to the budget committee. Staff's going to fix the chain link fence and work with Roger Smith on jamboree logistics and whether or not he wants to bring a request back for the fees that he had done like last year we did with the, or when we did them with the CARES funding. And, oh, sorry. Okay. I heard you, sometimes it's a look over here sound. And then staff is going to put the SDC study funds in the draft budget document. Anything else that I missed?
Okay, thank you, anything? Our.
So what are the next steps on the trees?
Probably for you guys to, well, I think one of the questions we should probably ask because it wasn't a real survey, it wasn't detailed out that it would be the, not just the tree well, right? That the new version requires that to all be dirt. So that's probably a question we should ask those owners if they're still is interested, if their whole length of the planter strip turns to dirt.
Even if it was 30 feet apart?
Yeah, she's, what she's saying is because the width is only three feet deep from the curb to the sidewalk, that we'd need to go the full length of those properties. And that's why Mr. Roach owns the full length of that, part of that block. So it would be from the Mexican Bakery all the way to Redon Gallery, would be all dirt.
Or bark dust or what, any type of.
Probably could be dirt, but then some sort of, I don't, it can't be pavers.
Yeah.
Right, you can't have people driving on it and stuff because the roots are going to be in there. So you could maybe put some sort of decorative rock for erosion and maybe, but it's like, I'd rather have it just be dirt because of trip hazards. If you put rock in there and someone steps across it and wobbles and falls over, then it's not really a smooth surface.
Sweet patch.
Yeah. I mean, you could put fa- fabric, you could plant a tree and put layer of fabric, right? And then some sort of mold or bark dust or something on top and keep it at a pretty even level. That's the tricky part is I don't want to create trip hazards in the planter strip. So whatever we do has got to be smoothed somewhat.
Up to the grave.
Yeah.
Did she say there was someone to come out?
Did she say what? She did not give me any details on when she could come. She said she would try and make that happen, but I haven't, I, my last email with her was the one where she sent the pictures and she had related to a different member of her network and he had said he had, he had planted some of those, but they were in a long and they got to eight inch caliper. So they got pretty big. So maybe we just have you guys schedule, I'd like to ask them, are you, if they still like the idea, if it's not in a tree well, if the planter is linear, just make sure that we aren't talking about it and they're not interested unless it's in a tree well.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
So I can, I can add that to my list of things to go talk with those individuals because it's really only three individuals that are willing and see what they're interested in. Okay. And then maybe come back, bring it, bring that information back. And if it's still interesting, then you guys talk about scheduling a work session at your May 2nd meeting for a future work session or?
I thought we were going to wait till she came out here, but.
Well, she may remember with the retirement and stuff, I don't know that we were promised she would make it. So that's why I don't want to let it just lie if you guys are wanting to make movement on it.
I mean, maybe once we have answers back, like give it another week or so, but then ask again just to kind of get a read, like should we wait on this or is this a pipe dream?
For Katie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, yeah. So I'll query the owners and make sure they would understand what council's now looking at based on her advice. And then I'll send Katie a follow-up reminding her, we'd love a visit.
Okay, anything else before adjournment meeting?
Yes. If we do that, is the city still going to be responsible for those trees 20 years later? So it's going to be a liability that we're going to carry forever then.
Or maintenance, trimming them appropriately and yeah, it would be, it would be a city asset we had to maintain.
But there's nothing stopping them from doing it, doing their own maintenance, so.
Correct. Planting it.
Yeah, they can put a tree in, they can maintain if they want.
Yep.
But they could put in any tree, not something that's going to play well with infrastructure.
Yeah.
They'd be liable for it.
Yeah.
Bit of us.
Right. Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you all for attending and I'll adjourn the meeting at 9:40 PM. Meeting adjourned.